Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, January 24th, and the time is 7:02. Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Sim- I'm sorry. Commissioner Stephan?
Present.
Commissioner Sims? Absent. Commissioner Dejeanay?
Present.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Present.
Chairman Barnes?
Here. Thank you. Next, Commissioner Harris has volunteered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Next item, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
I have a motion from Commissioner Harris- Commissioner Baker.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oops, we can vote electronically, so I guess we should. Oh, can you flag Jeff Sims as absent? Motion carries six to zero. The agenda is approved. Next item is the consent calendar. There's one item, approval of minutes from the meeting of January 10th, 2019.
I move approval of the minutes of January 10th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion from Commissioner Korsak, second from Commissioner Baker. Two votes? There we go. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Now to the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. Please remember, your comment time is limited to three minutes. I see one speaker on the list. Do we have any other?
No, sir. Just Rafael Brugeras.
Mr. Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. Tonight, we're going to talk about the future for young adults between kindergarten and fifth graders. A proposal that Moreno Valley Unified School is asking us to request- a request of theirs. And I wrote down five things, because it's very important to know that Moreno Valley is trying to accommodate a lot of things, and we're doing pretty well. I wrote five things. Zone change. Everybody needs a little help, whether it's the school board or developers. Everybody needs help when it comes to you being in front of us, when it comes to zone change. That's very important, because with that, we have things going on in our city. What's nice about this project is that, in the future, we're going to have the Nason Street corridor built there on Nason, between Cottonwood and Alexandria. I saw Phase Two a couple of Saturdays ago. We're going forward with this. It's just a matter of time before you see it. I saw a little bit, but you'll see the bigger picture when the staff has finished putting it all together. It's going to look wonderful for the school to be across from it, because that committee is going to help the parents that move into that phase, okay? That's the future, okay? Moreno Valley Elementary School on Cottonwood, between Nason and Morrison, okay? It holds only 530 students. Think about how much Moreno Valley in District Three has grown through the last several years. It cannot hold any more kids in that school, so they have to go to other elementary schools away from their community, okay? And my fourth thing is Moreno Valley is growing. It's truly, truly growing. We're having a lot of families moving into the city, and they're bringing their kids in their future, they're having kids, okay, and they want to go to kindergarten through the fifth grade. And the good thing about this piece of property, where they would like to put it, they're looking to put a two-story school building, two-story building. Finally, I'm hoping that they get away from the trailers of renting the trailers and building schools two stories, so kids can be all in one building instead of scattered throughout the property. That's what's good about this project, if we decide to give them that request, and that's what they're here for, to have us help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. No other speakers?
No, sir.
We will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda, non-public hearing items. Paul, could you give us a primer on how we handle these? Do we get a staff report, and then?
Yeah, exactly the same. It's just that the way the record is kept is different, and the public comment testimony period is, instead of being testimony, it's just comment. But otherwise, you're going to run it very similarly.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, case one of the non-public hearing items section, PEN 19-0010, applicant from Moreno Valley Unified School District. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Associate Planner Claudia Manrique will present the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, I'm Claudia Manrique. The Moreno Valley Unified School District has notified the City of Moreno Valley Planning Commission of its proposal to buy a parcel at the northeast corner of Nason Street and Bay Avenue for a new elementary school site. The district is requesting that the proposed land use conforms to the Moreno Valley general plan. District sent a letter in December of 2018 to the Planning Commission in accordance to Government Code Section 65402, which directs the school district to request a general plan consistency for any proposed acquisition of land. The subject property is approximately nine acres, and it's zoned R3, and it's in District Three. The property surrounding the site is also R3 to the north, south, and east, and there's public zone parcels across the way on Nason to the west. Staff's review of the general plan policies, there were none that would preclude a school from locating in the residential three zone or in any other general plan land category. While the general plan does have a public zone category, which includes schools, the city currently has at least one school not in the public zone. This is Sunny Mead Elementary, which is located at the southeast corner of Hickok Street and Dracia Avenue, and it's within the village plan, and it's zoned, a mixed zone, between village residential and village office residential. The proposed project is, would not be inconsistent with the primary use of our residential three, which is to provide a transition between rural and urban density development areas. And this is due to the fact that the rest of the sites around the property are also R3, and there's no neighboring rural zoning to provide a transition zone from. The closest rural zoning of R2 is approximately 800 feet to the north, across Cottonwood Avenue. And based on the above analysis, we find that the acquisition of this parcel is and does conform to the general plan. We have John Nichols from the school district here tonight, if you have any further questions of staff or of John. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of?
I was just wondering, is this school going to replace another school, or is it just going to be another school that will take the overflow from the school that only takes the 500 children right now?
The school is planned right now to be a replacement school for Moreno Elementary. The district does have plans to repurpose Moreno Elementary for other district support functions, but this will greatly increase the ability, our ability, to serve the region out there with this expanded site.
Okay, so it'll be similar to maybe Edgemont?
You could say that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Harris.
Yes, I was wondering, what is going to happen to that house that's within the proposed
That house would be demolished and made part of the school development, either playfields, hard courts, or building area. We haven't finalized the site map yet, conceptually, but that would be part of the essential nine acres that we would need for the elementary school site.
Thank you very much.
Does somebody live there right now?
I believe there are renters in the property right now, from what we understand.
What's your schedule, just out of curiosity?
If you guys grant us your blessing tonight with the conformance with the general plan, we're proceeding with acquisition of the property. We would hope to have designs done that we would work collaboratively on with your staff through this year, and we would hope to get state approvals and whatnot early next year and begin construction. The construction period would last probably 14 to 15 months. Try to time it for start of school in 2021, probably, if all goes well.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments, observations? Or a motion?
I would open public comment.
Oh, okay.
It's not testimony as in the hearing context, but you still, people, public stalls are right to comment.
I see. My apologies, I misunderstood. All right, at this time, we'll have a public, open public comments. Would anyone like to speak?
We have no public speakers.
No comments, all right.
That makes it easy.
So we'll close that portion of the hearing, and we'll deliberate. Have any thoughts? Yeah? All right. So all we need is a motion, and what is the motion, just to?
If you look at the conclusion paragraph of the staff report, you can adopt the second half of that language, which would be that the proposed acquisition conforms with the general plan. That's the determination that's being sought, so a motion that the proposed acquisition conforms with the general plan would be sufficient in this case.
All right.
I got one quick question, if I could. On Bay Street there, and maybe it's in the paperwork here, is that going to be developed on the whole road, or just one side, or? I couldn't, I see it on the plan here, but I didn't know whether that's a half a road or you're going to do the whole thing.
Bay Street would be developed along the south portion of the school site, in whatever capacity we would need to, you know, provide proper ingress and egress and emergency access. Often times, that is half the width of the right-of-way, but we would develop in coordination with the city to provide whatever appropriate access and street width that would need to be developed.
Okay, you know, the thing is, over the number of years I've been on this planning commission, we get so many, and I understand the deal there, where, you know, those people have lived there a number of years, but I'd like to see us complete that Bay Street. That's a mess down through there. I mean, and not being critical, but what's the city's position on that? We'd have to petition those people to see if they want to ante up the taxes to pay for that half, or how do we move forward on that?
Capital improvement project, probably.
Is that what that is, capital improvement?
That's correct, Chair, Michael Lloyd with Land Development Division. The city would need to develop a capital project and seek funding for it. The designation of Bay along there is a collector street. Because of that designation, it's not part of our development impact fees, so that would not be a potential funding source.
So the only way we could get that, if those people, those three or four people wanted to pony up the money to do the improvement, right? Is that basically what it's at?
That would certainly be an option. I don't know how likely that would be, but that's certainly an option that the school district and the city could pursue in the development.
Well, I just, okay, I get so frustrated on this stuff, but, you know, we do half streets here and there, and I don't know how those houses ever got in there without putting some kind of improvement in there. It's unbelievable. We've got it all over town. Not all over, but in a lot of those areas, and especially on that east end out there, it seems like to me, but just a point of issue, okay?
And I could imagine that the efficiency and economy, the scale of design and construction, if we could work collaboratively with the city to pull off an entire street development, we'd be more than happy to help with that.
That's a good plus.
Yeah. Thank you. Question here. Thank you. No, not quite that this is a question, but it looks like the front of the school would be facing that new development of Bay Avenue?
Yeah, we're trying to pull the front of the school and traffic ingress and egress off the Bay Street area where it's less congested.
So that looks like it'd be a one-way in and a one-way out.
Are you talking about the actual street itself, or onto the school site?
Into the school site. Looks like the parents would have to come in and do that turnabout, and then come back out.
Yeah, we haven't fully finalized the design of the school by any means yet. We really haven't started it. That was more of a, call it a test fit, to just see what the facility and support site work would look like, to see if the site was feasible to accommodate a school of this size. So we haven't finalized all the details with all the ingress and egress out of, into and onto the site. And we would, again, work collaboratively with city staff to make sure that was all safe and, you know, separated and coordinated.
I see. Yeah, I was saying, because Nason already is very, very busy, and then just a few blocks down, then you have Valley View High School. And the way it looks here, it looks like they'd all have to make that, because there's only, Nason going north, you can only travel north, which means that the parents would only be able to travel north in, the way this looks now. Drop everybody off and then come back out and travel north again.
Unless we did some sort of signalized intersection at Bay and Nason, which might be a good idea.
Because Bay is going to-
Is that part of the ballgame, to put a signal in there at Bay?
That would, again, be something we'd coordinate with city staff to work that out.
Eric Lewis, City Traffic Engineer. Yes, most likely, the intersection would be signalized as part of the development of the school.
I know when I was out there this afternoon, it was pretty difficult to get across there. I mean, I had to jam it on and then shut down in the center median, you know, to let the cars go by if I was going, and I probably should have waited, but there's a lot of traffic on that Nason, and especially if you're going to have people going in and out picking up students, but that'd just be my thought process on it, but.
Yeah, we would also have probably pedestrians as well crossing there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Questions?
I accept your vote there.
No problem. Still need a motion from somebody? A motion to acknowledge the second half of the paragraph. That's, all right.
The Planning Commission has considered the location, purpose, and extent of a proposed real property acquisition by the Moreno Valley Unified School District, and has determined that it conforms with the Moreno Valley general plan. Is that okay?
Beautiful.
More than okay.
And I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Baker. Please vote. All right. Motion carries six to nothing. Thank you very much. Their staff wrap up on that? Probably not.
Your determination would be noted by the school district, and no further actions required.
Very good. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Case one, PEN 180119, a general plan amendment. 0120, a specific plan amendment. 0121, a change of zone. 0107, a plot plan. And 0090, tentative parcel map 37514. The applicant is Continental East Fund Three. Do we have a staff report?
Staff report will be presented by Associate Planner Jeff Bradshaw.
Good evening, Chair Barnes, and members of the Planning Commission. The item presented to you this evening has a bit of a history, and so as background, I just wanted to provide this information. The applicant, Continental East Fund Three, LLC, received Planning Commission approval for a project identified as the Continental Villages Project in November of 2012. And this was a project approved on the same parcel site as depicted here on the screen. It was for development of a residential project that would have included three residential product types. There would have been detached single-family homes, homes clustered around courtyards, and then there was an apartment component to that project as well. And that would have all occurred over the 19 acres of that project area. Phase one, the apartment project, is currently under construction. So if you've been out to the site recently, you can see along the LaSalle frontage that there are apartments that are currently under construction. The request from the applicant this evening is, as a number of applications is described in the title of the report, and a request from the developer to modify that original approval. The proposal to modify the project would result in subdividing that 19 acres into three parcels and affecting some land use changes for the site that would allow for development of medium-high-density residential over the vacant remainder portion of the site, as well as creating a commercial site on the corner at LaSalle and Cremaria. Along with that proposal would be permission from the city to then develop 112 apartment units on the vacant remainder portion of the site. The parcel map, as proposed, would subdivide that 19 acres into three different parcels. Parcel one would be an area of about 7.2 acres, and parcel one would actually be the apartment site that's under construction. Parcel two would be a 2.84 acre site. And that parcel would be located at the corner of LaSalle and Cremaria, and that would be intended for future commercial development. Parcel three would be the 8.8 acre remainder portion for development of Phase Two of the project, and Phase Two, as they refer to that, is for the 112 units of apartments. The land use applications related to this project include a general plan amendment. The project site is located within a portion of Moreno Valley Ranch, specific plan known as Planning Area 21. And that is an area, going back to when the general, excuse me, when the specific plan was approved in 1985, that is an area that was designated for both commercial and for high-density residential development. In 2001, the city approved an amendment to the specific plan that changed the land use designations for the site and removed the commercial designation and established high-density residential over the entirety of the site. The request from the applicant is a general plan amendment that would accomplish two things. It would, excuse me, rather, that would change the land use for a corner or a portion of the site. And again, this is that 2.84 acres that are referred to in the parcel map. And the proposal would be to restore the commercial designation that was previously on the site for just that corner portion. Related to the land use changes is a specific plan amendment. That application would establish a commercial designation for the 2.84 acres, and would also establish a medium-high-density residential land use designation over the vacant land that would be in parcel three. The related zone change application would then establish zoning over the top of the specific plan land use, and the zoning that's proposed for the site would be neighborhood commercial for that commercial corner, and medium-high residential for the residential portion of the site that remains to be developed. The plot plan application presented to you this evening is for purposes of developing the eight-point acre site with apartments. The design of those apartments is an architectural design that's consistent with the original project, and what's proposed is 16 units and eight two-story duplex buildings, which would be placed along the Cremaria frontage. And the design of those is intended to be compatible with the single-family homes that exist in that neighborhood across the street. And so as a buffer or a transition, the first thing you would see from Cremaria would be the duplexes, and then as you move further into the site, there would be six two-story buildings to accommodate 96 apartment units, for a total of 112 units for Phase Two. The project would include passive recreation areas, basins for water quality treatment, recreation building with common amenities, including a pool and community center. Again, the project site, as described, is located within Planning Area 21 of the Moreno Valley Ranch specific plan. When the specific plan was adopted in 1985, there was an environmental impact report prepared for that master plan, and that was certified by the city in 1985. The additional environmental review that's taken place for this project site was the negative declaration prepared in 2012 and adopted by the city for the original project. In looking at the scope of this project, of what's proposed in Phase Two, as well as the request to make the land use changes, the city determined that those changes as part of this modified project are minor, that they would not result in any new or significant environmental impacts, and then qualified through CEQA for the preparation of an addendum. And that is the approach that was taken with this project. The city worked with Carlson Strategic Land Solutions to prepare an initial study and an addendum to both the original EIR, as well as the negative declaration prepared for the original project. The initial study examined the potential of this project to have an impact on the environment and determined that impacts would remain less than significant with the implementation of standard conditions of approval on the project, as well as project design features that would address CEQA categories of air quality, cultural resources, geotechnical concerns, as well as noise and traffic. The public notice for this project was conducted in a fashion that's consistent with our requirements and our code. Notice of the public hearing this evening was published in the newspaper, as well as notices being sent to all property owners within 300 feet and the site being posted as well. As of this evening, I'd only received one phone call from a resident that had questions about wanting to better understand what the project was. I haven't received any correspondence or any type of inquiry that indicated any opposition to the project. Just as a matter of housekeeping, there is a memo that was prepared for you this evening that should have been provided to you on the dais, and that refers to revisions to the conditions of approval that we would recommend, correction from a planning condition, and preferred conditions of approval from our Special Districts Division. That concludes my report. I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have. Also with this evening is Peter Carlson, who worked with the city in the preparation of the addendum, and the developer is also here this evening with his team to do a presentation and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of staff or the applicant? Mr. Harris?
I was just wondering, the neighborhood commercial, would, could that include a gas station? I'm not saying I want that, I just, would that, if we approved that, could they put a gas station in at some later time?
Gas station would not be a permitted use in that zone. That would require the community commercial zoning.
Okay, great.
And this would be intended to be a list of permitted uses that would be less intense at that location.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question, Jeff. I saw conditions discussing gates and fences around the perimeter.
Yes.
Are those all optional in every case?
The city, I'm not aware of any instance where the city, through our code or past comments, would require securing a site. They're intended to guide the plan check process if the developer elects to do so. And it's my understanding that their intent is to secure the site with gates and fences.
All right. Thank you. All right, another one for you. The products that are along Cremaria, the buffer or the compatibility with the residential?
Yes.
If those are behind a wrought iron fence of some type, or some type of fencing, it seems less critical that that be done. Is that something that the city mandated?
That was a design preference on the developer's part.
Okay.
And not a requirement, but I think an effort on their part to create an appearance along that long frontage that, in their estimation, provided more compatibility with the homes that are already established out there.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No questions? All right. I had a question on a couple of conditions, if I can find it. Oh, yeah. Street A, is that a private street?
Street A is a private street.
And then, this is kind of a general question, I don't have a specific item in mind, but there's lots of references as far as either construction or improvement plans that say prior to occupancy, building permits, grading permits. But phase one of the maps are already under construction. Are they blanket excluded from all of the conditions that reflect prior to?
What you see presented to you this evening are conditions of approval that are specific to phase two only. Phase one already has conditions, and the construction, as well as any requirements all the way through occupancy and building final, would all come from the original conditions approved for the phase one portion of the project.
Do you have the old site plan?
I do not have a slide of that available.
I couldn't remember how the current apartments that were under construction interfaced with the rest, I was just curious.
The, the drive, the driveway that you see off of LaSalle in alignment with Street A, on the original plan was located a little bit further to the north.
Oh, okay.
Phase three would have been occupied by, what was a clustered courtyard concept? And that continued along the Cremaria Avenue frontage and then transitioned into small lot detached, single-family product.
And the two apartment projects are going to be completely independent, as far as sharing amenities, ownership, management, whatever?
In terms of the management, I think I'd defer to the applicant to better address that. In terms of the design, phase one could operate today entirely on its own, the way it's designed. It has common amenities to support the project, parking, all of that is self-supporting. It will share common access. Phase two would have its own common open space and recreational amenities and satisfied parking for itself as well. The parcel map would result in separate parcels for each of those pieces. But again, the applicant can probably better answer the management question.
Well, the management's none of my business, I just wondered if they could function independently, and they can.
They can.
Okay, very good. That pretty much wraps up all my questions, anyone else? All right. Hearing no questions, let's open the public comment portion. Do we have any?
You'd want to hear from the applicant first?
Oh, apologies. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Thank you, Paul. You gotta watch me like a hawk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioner, and members of the commission. My name is Al Retan, I'm the President of Continental East Development, the developer of Continental Villages. We're certainly not new here to the city. We started coming here about 2010, we own Renaissance Village here, and we are now celebrating our fourth year. One of the things that makes us quite unique as a developer is not only do we develop, we build, we own, and we operate. And we've created 65 jobs in our senior community, we're very proud of that. And we've affected a lot of seniors' lives as a result of having a good staff. I want to thank particularly the mayor and the entire staff. This has been a very interesting project to try to develop, and I'll give you just a little insight. When we started working on the senior project, a couple of the planning commissioners said, why hadn't we considered memory care? We hadn't. So we went back, but we do have memory care today. When we started this project, as we broke around in 2018 for phase one, density at 18 units to the acre, we started getting phone calls from the colleagues, started getting calls from the neighbors, and people actually coming into the construction trailer, what are you going to do with the second phase of the rest of the property? And would you consider doing a small commercial center? We hadn't even thought about that. But we try to be good developers, and we feel that the neighborhood wants and needs a small community center. What are we talking about size, only about 20,000 feet? But what they seem to want is the ability to have some stand alone where people can sit and enjoy their food. And so, one of the challenges has been to design a roadway system that would accommodate that, and within the screen you'll see that we call that phase three. So what we're asking for is a couple of things, is that for our phase two, we're actually acting to downzone this a little bit. We've got a lot of feedback that people across the way have asked us, would we consider a little bit less density? And so we have. And there's really three types of, if we take the project out at 19 acres, there's three types of products. We have the phase one at about 18 units to the acre, phase two at about 13 units to the acre. But what we've done to mitigate and make the project have a more residential feel is we've added 16 two-story condominiums that have a very much a residential component. And so we think that with the combination of changing a little bit of the architecture style, this is more early Californian, do our Mediterranean theme on phase one, that we've come up with a very nice environment. And one of those things will include walking paths. And so, subject to the approval of the Planning Commission, if you allow us to lower the density a little bit, we can get more open space for the residents that would enjoy this community. And we would be able to come back perhaps in the spring and to show you what we could do with that pad for the commercial center. With that, that would conclude my presentation. We have our architect and the entire team here, and if you have any questions, we're certainly available for that.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant?
So to date, you don't really know what would be going on in that commercial.
We, as we speak, we still have people going out into the community. What I can tell you is the maximum would be about 20,000 feet. So it's, it really, it's not a community shopping center, it's not going to have a grocery store, certainly not going to have a gas station. Really, it would be more food-driven. And, but what we'd like to do is to sit down with staff and come back at another time, subject to the approval of the proposed tonight, and I think you'll be very pleased with what we propose.
Anyone else?
That answered my question.
Having no additional questions, let's open the public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have any speakers?
We have two, Ms. Smith and Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, everyone, and happy new year. Well, I am a resident in Moreno Valley Ranch, and I've been in Moreno Valley since 1988, in Moreno Valley Ranch since 1998. And we've had a lot of great development. We have two major hospitals, Moreno Valley College, which I graduated from back in 1999. And I can say that when I first heard about this project, I said it's a great concept because we have a lot of working-class people that work at both hospitals, doctors and nurses, who commute and who want something that's not a huge home, but they also would like apartments or duplex to call home. Because a lot of them do commute from different areas, and they're willing to invest in those to stay in them too. We have a lot of young people who go to the college, and they need places to stay, and they need places to eat. When I first heard about the development, I did do my research, I did do my due diligence, and I said this is what will make Moreno Valley Ranch more a great area to live in. We do have condos, we do have apartments, we do have a shopping center, and we're growing. And we really need to have more places in a diverse residential areas where people can live. And I've been out here, and I see great development and growth, but I live on that side of town. And I really like the commercial concept because we do have places to eat, but we like to sit down and eat. We have two major shopping centers that provide different places to eat. And I, as a resident, we like to have diversity. And one thing I do like about this project, they offer two clubhouses for each development. Now, I live in Moreno Valley Ranch, we have one main clubhouse with the pool. If we add more homes, that's going to really hinder where we're at right now with our main clubhouse. But if we have the apartments and the duplex condos types, and they have their own clubhouse and their own pools, it will alleviate a lot of the traffic and also the crowdedness where we're at right now. But I do support this project. I know the developer, I researched his background, he developed Renaissance Village, which is a great asset to our community for our seniors. And I hope eventually the developer, I was talking to him earlier, he builds more of those communities as well. But this project, it will be a benefit for our area in Moreno Valley Ranch, and it's something that I know, when I ran for Congress last year, so I had to disclose that. But talking to younger people who go to the college, they want a place to stay, they can't afford a full house, so they want something smaller, more convenient, because they're more quick, I call them the microwave generation, and they want somewhere where they can go to sleep, have a fun place to stay that's safe. I like this area because it's also gated, and to me, that brings a lot of safety. I know that was mentioned earlier, I believe, with the chairman about gated community. We do have gated mixed communities, and they're great for our area for safety, and it makes it really look nice. So please approve this project, and thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, Mr. Brugeras.
I'm not sure what can be developed under the neighborhood commercial designation.
Pardon me, sir.
Oh, pardon me.
Did you fill out a speaker slip?
Pardon me?
Did you fill out a speaker slip? A speaker slip?
Yep.
Could you fill out a slip and let Mr. Brugeras speak, and then you can come to the podium?
I, I'm sorry, I have poor hearing, I thought I was, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but obviously you can't hear me. Rafael, would you?
Oh.
Rafael, you can come to the podium.
Thank you so much. Good evening again, commissioners, staff, residents. She said a lot for me and for the whole district, okay? And it's true. I know, because I campaigned the whole district for, and I know that area real well. And I thank Mr. Harris for the question, so we don't have to have this debate later about gas stations. You know, they don't work well in some places in Moreno Valley. So I'm glad that was taken care of, and the developer confirmed it. And I'm grateful for the developer for being honest, that he'll bring this back to us, the 2.84, when the plan is ready, he'll bring it back to us to be approved. So this is not part of the, you know, what they're going to put on, so that's a good thing. Again, they're bringing it down from 125 to 112 on the unit, so they're coming down, so they're honoring the homeowner's request to have less traffic up there. If you look at the diagram, I mean, the one I have is 294. What I like about where they're going to have the commercial is on the corner, and it ends on Cove Way, it does not go past that. So anything above that on Cremaria, it's all houses and the new apartments. So you're not going to have people looking for the store all the way up in the corner. It's going to be way down there by the main street, away from the homeowners and the apartments. And that's a good thing for those people that live up there. What I'm hoping that they have an office there with managers, because I didn't see that there, a management team that's going to be on the premises all the time to make sure everything's run well, and some manager living on the premises 24/7, somebody that lives on the premises, to make sure that everything goes well if things occur at night. The other thing, what I like about the developer, he's honoring the Moreno Valley Ranch specification plan. So in other words, whatever Moreno Valley Ranch did with the walls and wrought irons and all that, they're honoring the same plan. They're not going to change anything but honor that, that's a good thing. So we know that this has been around since 1985, approved in 2001 by the commission, I mean, the council members then, and then re-again approved by 212 for phase two, phase one, and I'm here in 2019 with phase two, because I don't know nothing about 2012, I was not here. But what I do see is the developer and the staff's honesty to do the right thing for District Four and the committee and the city of Moreno Valley. And we need a lot of developers like that in the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras.
I have to respectfully disagree with what I do serve from the other two people. Yeah, I live real close to the property site. I liked what was originally proposed of residential mixed use, I mean, with the residential with, you know, apartments, and I guess there's a little bit change in the density. But when I heard about the change on the corner piece to neighborhood commercial, I tried to find out from the city's website what neighborhood commercial really means. I guess someone asked, a gentleman had said, well, can a gas station go on there? And I guess, and he said, no. But what's the, can the developer come back and say, well, we want a conditional use permit for some other type of usage? So I don't know if that's allowed or not, but I still don't, I still can't figure out from the city's website what neighborhood commercial allows. Is it like fast food? Or, you know, what does retail mean? Is it just food service, or could it be something else? I mean, and, you know, I guess that's one question I have. This lady said, well, you know, she's all in favor of this because the students could have, you know, lower-cost housing. I really don't know if community colleges have a whole bunch of students that are, you know, relocating to go to a community college and are looking for student housing. I mean, that's kind of like contrary to what you think of a community college. I mean, I could see that if it was a state university or, you know, University of California campus, but Riverside Community College is not like that. So I think that's a little, I have some problems with that, you know, as a, you know, as a positive factor for these changes. But... But, but again, I, I mean, there's nothing along La Salle between the high school going from Ivors to La Salle. I mean, you have your State of Brothers, the CBS and all of that commercial development there. So why does a little piece have, you know, if that's going to allow fast food or some other usage like that, well, I'd have some real problem, issues with that. So, you know, maybe someone can tell me here what neighborhood commercial usage means, if that's going to allow fast food or some other taco stand or whatever's going to go there. And that, to me, would be totally contrary to what the neighborhood is about. What's, you know, we have your commercial stuff down the street and you have, you know, I, and, you know, I could see that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but there's not, nothing between, you know, between the high school and Ivors and La Salle. That's, so, I don't know, someone has, if someone can sort of answer some of that, I'd be like to hear it.
Your time is up. Jeff, I think there's a list of allowed uses, if we have his contact information, could that be provided to him?
Oh, absolutely. We, I can get with him after, and we can provide the...
Mr. Bradshaw can give you a list of approved uses for the neighborhood commercial so that you'll understand.
Yeah.
He'll provide that for you.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
After the meeting. Thank you very much. All right. No other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. With that, we will close the public comments and deliberate. Anyone have any thoughts?
I think the developer did an excellent job researching this project. If you go to their website, you can actually see they're talking about Moreno Valley College and that they're going, there's a nursing program, there's going to be a physician's assistant program, and there's going to be teachers that are going to need housing, students that are going to need housing. And I can see that, that students will not always want to eat on campus. And this is going to be very close to that campus. And I think they did a very good job. And if you, if you go to their site, you can actually see what these units look like inside. They're, they're very nice.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I was on the Planning Commission when we approved the assisted living home out there on, I think it's on the Cactus, or just north of Cactus there on Nissan. And that's a, that's a first-class development group, I think. There were several of us planning commissioners that met individually with them when we did that project back in 2012. And they followed through 100%. I think, I think they came in and did another phase on that. I may be wrong on that, no? But anyhow, it's a good, good development group. I think they'll do what they, they say they're going to do, and I'm totally in favor of this project.
Thank you.
Well, I concur with Robert. If you do go to the website, you can see that the development is very, very nice. And I do know about the assisted living, and I always thought that there should be more of that, because there are quite a few people. And now with the, a lot of the students that are going into the medical field, I believe that they are going to need housing and whatever does get put into that commercial area, I'm sure the developer will actually give it a lot of thought. And actually, it'll be an asset. Of course, it's going to come back to us and then we'll see whether it is or not. But I think it's a very good project.
I think it's very timely. I think it's in the right place at the right time. He has a very good track record, and so I'm going to support it.
All right. I concur. I think it's a good project. I was just a little looking at the way they're set up Phase One and Phase Three. And if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, Phase One is closer to the college than Phase Three, where Phase Three is closer to the housing. And in Phase Three, it looks like it says it's rental offices and that's where the, if college students would want to go and sit and eat, or is that the area that would, is that where that would happen?
Yes, to answer your question, Phase One is the original project, and that is the portion along La Salle that's the closest
That's already under construction and the closest to the college.
I believe Phase Three is how they're referring to the future commercial development?
On the corner of La Salle.
On the corner. And it would be separated from the college to the north by Phase One. And then Phase Two is the vacant portion along Crimea that would be developed with apartments if approved by council.
I particularly like the way the condos face their houses and then a little further back, that's where you have the apartment. So I'm in favor of the project as well.
I like it. So someone make a motion? Not if you just, not if you just move to approve the resolutions.
Okay. All right. I recommend that we approve resolution number 2019-03, 04, 05, 06, 07, 08, including the revised conditions of approval that were submitted today. Did I get a good mark for that?
Gold star.
Great motion. Thank you very much. A second?
I second.
Second from Commissioner Stevens? All right. Please vote. All votes have been cast. The motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. We have a staff wrap-up.
The recommendations of the Planning Commission on this item would be carried forward to the City Council for their consideration and final action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing items. Are there, is there any other commission business? Any staff comments?
Yes, I think we both have staff comments for you tonight.
Really? We are so lucky.
So lucky, look at this. I've been asked to just kind of give you a little prep, a little warning of what's coming down the road in the world of marijuana in the city. As the commission may be aware, the council has approved a certain number of permits. There's been changes to both our zoning code and our regulatory code, which allows these businesses that have been, as long as they've been licensed by the state, to come into this particular zones.
Could we have it quiet in the back, please? We are still conducting a meeting. Thank you.
The final piece of that puzzle for the applicants is to bring their very specific individual projects to this commission for their CUPs. A conditional use permit is required on each and every one of these uses. So I believe they're going to be trickling in, you know, a couple at a time. Probably over the next year, you're going to see a lot of them. Just if you have any questions or concerns about that process, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. I just want to give kind of the general warning that we don't want to, we can no longer make the determination of whether or not marijuana is a good idea or not. We have to confine ourselves to whether this particular location and conditions are suitable for the type of use that's going in there based on our code. And due to the litigious nature of this industry, we want to, you know, be very careful about how we proceed with those. So please, if you do have any questions about the scope of your authority, please reach out to me at any time prior to those hearings.
Now, this is, go ahead.
Well, each application's going to be different and unique, both in its conditions and its location. My biggest warning, I guess, is we don't want to be put in a position where this board, this commission has denied a CUP because they don't want marijuana in, that ship has sailed in the city as far as what our, how our code reads. We still have the same authority we have, you just need to treat it like, like any other conditional use permit. And if it, if they satisfy all the requirements of our code, if they've, you know, the proper conditions on there to protect whatever neighboring businesses are in there or residential uses or what have you, then really, we shouldn't, you know, we don't want to arbitrarily deny these permits. And I know this commission has strong feelings about the subject matter, which is why I want, you know, I just kind of wanted to bring that before they started coming and make sure, you know, my door is open if you have specific concerns that you want to bring on how far, you know, that authority goes without putting, we don't want to put the city in a position where everything is appealed and challenged and we end up in court litigating what we don't need to litigate. But we still have this, you know, if there's regulatory issues that we want to impose, the way the parcel design is and the things that you already normally have the scope and authority over, those are still all fair game in these coming hearings.
I take it that you're presenting this because the council took action on what the commission had punted on six, eight months ago, whenever it was, when we neglected or chose not to decide on the process? The council has enacted a process?
Well, the process, not for this commission. The process for this commission is no different from any other CUP that's coming.
No, for the approval of the dispensaries.
Right. Yeah, the council has identified that dispensaries are allowed and other uses are not just dispensaries. That's what we want to make sure you're also aware of. You're going to have manufacturing, you're going to have distribution, you're going to have, let's see, testing, some different types of uses with different impacts. And it, we don't know where this is going to go, if zones are going to get expanded in the future, uses are going to be expanded. But because we're going to get so many of the same or similar type of thing coming, coming to you all at once over this next year, we just kind of wanted to give you that kind of warning, that kind of heads up of what to expect and make sure that you know my door is open. If you do have concerns in general, obviously, specific concerns about projects we'll deal with as they come up. But if you have general ones about the process or outcomes, feel free to bring them to me. Well, they can always ask for, a zone change can always be applied for. That's the...
I guess my question is...
That would be something this commission would hear independently before it went to a council as well. The ones that are currently, that we're talking about have already gone through the process of identifying a location within the zone that has been approved for. So the ones that you're going to see aren't going to have that issue. You're not going to have general plan amendments or zone change amendments. They should all, the issues regarding proximity to sensitive uses should all have been already flushed out before they even got to this stage. So you'll be dealing mostly with design and, and I don't know if you've seen any already and you know what kind of related issues are going to come, but with the parcel map maybe, if they're, if they're building. I don't know the scope of what's coming yet. But the issue of whether or not they, we should have them or not is one that I want to caution you not to make a part of your deliberative process.
It'll be like any other CUP.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions on it?
No.
Additional?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, one thing I wanted to do first was thank all the members of the community that came out on January 12th, Saturday, for our Nason Corridor Study Community Meeting. We had a wonderful turnout despite the rain, so I wanted to thank everyone in the community that did come out and gave us input on the study and the plans that were presented there. The second item is that I wanted to note that the Planning Commission does have three commissioner terms expiring on March 31st of this year. Both sitting commissioners and other qualified residents can apply for these positions. In accordance with the city's operating policy for boards, commissions, and committees, all applicants, including incumbents, would complete the standard application form. Interested persons can contact Angel McGow, she's the executive assistant to the mayor and city council for an application. And there's no set date for consideration of those applications, so I would suggest or encourage anybody who's submitting the application to do so as early as possible. And that's everything.
Thank you. No more staff comments?
No more.
Planning Commission comments? Who's expiring?
Um...
That's three?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it's Chair, Chairman, oh, excuse me, no, let me take that back. You're right. It's Chair, Chairman Barnes.
Yep.
Vice Chair Corset and Commissioner Sims.
All right. Sims, Korzak, and myself.
Sorry, Commissioner Baker, I hope I didn't scare you.
There you go, right? All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting, February 14th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.[1773.36]